So, from what I was here a couple of years ago. Uh, so it's just, wanted to start, um, procedures of how to move forward with the city. Um, getting the alcohol licenses, uh, we do obtain an alcohol license down in Tequila. We have a full bar down there with alcohol, beer, spiritual lines and everything like that. Only thing we asking for here is just beer and wine. We don't want to go full alcohol, uh, bar. But I think it'd be a great addition to what we got going on out there, um, and with us trying to screen that property in. Try to keep flies away and everything, but that structure being right there, that helped us kind of like mend it all up and make it look, um, very, um, appealing to the city. And it will also help us create to where we can run some, uh, some CO2 lines and everything to have, uh, refills on the teas and the cokes and Pepsi and everything like that versus us. Still trying to build some little bottles, so, uh, with that little building, it was very tough making it a kitchen anyway, so. Just to get some more, uh, a little bit more space to carry a bit more beverages.
So, you're adding a completely new structure for the beverages? Is that what I'm seeing there?
It's roughly, I think, um, I think this one of you guys got the specs over there. It's like nine feet wide, twelve feet deep. And then it'd actually be, um, very, um, it'd help us secure it too if we make this own standard structure because we want to pull the roll-up window there so we can lock it down, it's own door. That way, nothing can happen, so we'll make sure we put extra security on that building. We don't want anybody trying to get in there and get any, um, alcohol, the beverages, anything like that. And the way we're going to design is make sure that if you're sitting in our dining room, even if you look inside there, you'll see the menus on the back wall versus any alcohol, which still could be very, um, family friendly, so. Want to make sure we keep that in mind. And just speaking on the renewals and everything, um, anytime we renew our liquor license down in Tequila, it's not a full process again. Um, the state, uh, will do their due diligence and run everything they need to do and everything like that, so. Uh, we just renewed in November, so it's not a full check again, everything. It's usually just, um, a check and then they'll go back through your paperwork and you just fill out paperwork again, so.
Have you started the paperwork there?
Uh, no, no, I came last year, at the end of last year, so I kind of held off just a tad bit, so. Uh, our process down there was within sixty days, I think it was, so. Um, we kind of wanted to try to get all this rolling before Super Bowl, but, you know, patience is virtue and we got that, so. It took us a year and a half with that building, so. Um, I think with this one, we just want to make sure it's right. We get ready for the spring and the summer and I think, like I said, we try to keep the flies down and everything and. Make sure that people that come through town enjoy the experience and, you know, speaking about us and us, they don't, I mean, we really have a great place to come downtown.
Am I correct in saying that there was a time that they said that they, instead of rolling out a, a beer and wine, a beer and wine license. Towards the end of the year, you'd have to redo it after the first of the year? So you wouldn't have to duplicate the process?
Right, that's, that is correct.
Okay.
Because we had to get, like, yeah, yeah, you could get crow rated and everything like that, but it will cost you a lot more money to do it twice.
Right, right, okay.
What about your, um, water? I mean, your utilities and all that? This is going to be a separate structure?
No, it is still tied to all that, it, not, not to that sense. It just, like I say, house the, house the beer and wine and stuff over there, you know, the water lines.
You have water and electricity in here, correct?
Yes.
And there's nothing, nothing there now?
Right.
I'm not sure with us not owning the land that that building sits on, um, we have to get, reach out to CSX or, I'm not sure.
You said don't own. The last time we did the research before you designed the beach, you got us on the land. The only piece you don't own is that red, that, um, the, um, the fence line. So the fence line comes in, I make sure like, um, exactly where, not, not the, um, not the gated fence, but where we put our fence line, it's actually, um, you got this property.
I see, I see what you're saying.
Can't mess with CSX.
Okay. Uh, is the bar going to be fully manned all the time, as long as you're open?
Yeah, if it's, if it's open, somebody, someone would be there and, but they'll have their pouring license and everything, they check an ID. Like I say, I do obtain a full, full bar in Tequila for the last three years, so. Yes, we, we make sure we stay to all standards.
I think you're doing a great job with that business.
Thank you.
It's definitely an addition, um, an addition to our, a well-needed addition to our community.
Thank you.
Um, the food is great, the response is great, um, I mean, it's, it's been a great addition to the community. I know we didn't get off. Just such a great, great start and I appreciate your, your perseverance and your drive and your motivation. As, as a business owner, it's, it's a great model.
Thank you. And just, uh, another aside along the, um, beer and wine, we're going to try to mostly use all aluminum, so we don't really want any glass to where it could break and. Somebody falls or anything, so it's a big liability, so we want to go with aluminum. And we're probably going, um, who's ever been in the bar at the time, probably pour into a, a plastic cup if they, in the dining room, so. We're looking to go to full service, um, next year, well, this year, I should say, um, just to make sure that, you know, if you want to get there with the family and sit down and have a drink or something like that, or you can watch the TVs, we're going to start serving out there, so.
Are you going to continue the theme of the, like, the cedar or the hickory or the wood look?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Because that, that's working for us and, you know, we had an issue with that, that.
Oh, yeah, but I think we all, right, yeah, we, but I think we all got the same vision now, so.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it adds, adds to our, our look downtown and that's something else we are interested in preserving here, so. Appreciate what you're doing.
And, uh, like I say, if we need to have one off or anything like that, I'm always available.
And free samples are always welcome.
That's why I was holding knife.
No, thank you. Well, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Mary Williams.
All right, it's really exciting that we have new councilman, new mayor. Congratulations, but I'm very excited for the city. However, I do need to make a point here. The point is, when you all took your seats, you ran for that seat, you were elected to that seat. When you did that, you knew that you were putting yourself in a position to be critiqued. People are going to say things about you as a leader of the town, okay? What I hope we never see again up here is anyone attacking a person's personal life. That, no one here ran for a public office to have their life put on display. And it is very, very bad when you all do that to anyone. It's not what you were put here for. Nobody asked for that. And each and every one of you, well, not all of y'all, let me take that back. Some of you, we have gotten, people send us information and on your personal lives. We don't bring that up. Because we don't care about your personal life. It's your life as a leader in the town. And I just want to make that very clear. It's a new year, new mayor, new people. Let's see if we can act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Gary Yelomo, Councilman.
There's a few items that I've got listed here tonight. Um, I'll try to make it plain as a hint. But there's some, uh, things that. Not sure if these things do it or not. There's some things that, uh, we talked about in the previous council, the mayor, um, that I'd like to bring up again and went up.
I guess we'll have to speak up. Reach down deep.
Okay, so, the first thing I wanted to discuss was the tree removal easement.
Wait just a second, I'm sorry. We need to be recording, uh. So, is that, is that our method of recording? Okay, well, let's address that right now before we end up in, uh, in more trouble. So, let's, let's find a way to, uh. Let's turn that.
See if there's a switch on the top of it.
Everything's turned off there. Well, I know, I know these three are close together and that might be an issue, so. And these two, why don't you all share one, if you need to?
Plug it in.
What's that?
Unplug one of them in.
Okay, I'm going to unplug Gary's. That'll give us enough distance.
I'm loud enough anyway.
There you are.
All right, we're going to try it again then?
Sure, Mayor, it'll fly. Tonight is.
Gary, you say something, someone put it to loud enough?
Test.
Are you good?
Yeah, I think so. So I wanted to bring it up for discussion, the tree, because we talked about this previously, there's a clause missing. Says I hereby release a way of claims that I may have against the city, as officers, agents, and employees, but it's a claim that I'm not going to license in the middle of the tree. However, uh, tree surgeons should now be licensed and bonded, uh, previous council had voted to include that language in. And, um, the tree committee, uh, council member, the corpsman chairs, had voted to, uh, ask the council to remove this previously. So, I would like to, uh, bring that up for discussion, anybody? Test. Go. It's, um, it's a fair one. You guys seeing out there?
Very well.
Okay, one more time, sorry, everyone. We had discussed, um, previously removing this clause. I know, uh, just speaking personally. There's a, uh, alleyway that's city-owned beside my house and there's also one at my house that, uh, has city trees on it. And, um, yeah, a tree need to be taken home. I personally would not sign this clause, so I don't feel right asking anyone else to sign this clause.
Okay, it was a recommendation of the tree committee that the clause be removed, so, um. We, the, the tree committee's an open, um, it's an open meeting, anybody can attend. We have about, uh, seven members of the community that volunteer their time. We reviewed this, it's just, it's just not right to ask this of our, uh, citizens. And, um, I would like to move forward with this on the agenda for Tuesday night to, uh, go up for a vote. The city, this is the city, city tree that can be removed by the city. That is holy, it's a city tree.
Next thing on, on the list, uh, is green space parks, sidewalks, and trees cleared up. If possible, I think it'd be a good idea to get a schedule for, um, the trimming of the trees around the sidewalks. We have some that are overhanging, people when they're running on sidewalks in the morning, they're having to duck up underneath them. We have new trees that are going to need to be watered in the summer that were planted by the city and home, um, city runway. So we, we need to get those watered as well. And then sidewalks, um, in some areas are desperately needing to be ashed and trimmed and, you know, more grass growing on sidewalks in some areas than you can actually see sidewalks. So I would like, um, entertain the idea of getting some kind of schedule for cleanup of sidewalks and trimming of, uh, trees that are hanging on sidewalks. And, uh, also, uh, taking care of flower beds and, and around some of the flower beds are, will just repair. And I know we got some volunteers that do some of that, but some are going to need some, some hard work as well, because they're actually, my understanding, city-owned property.
Long those lines, I noticed that, um, the property in the old warehouse, uh, the, the brick along the front of the warehouse. And has completely, uh, fallen off. There weren't any brick ties. Didn't use any brick ties and of course, when it ran, water went straight, straight down that crack and then the whole wall of bricks fell over. Is that our responsibility or is that the landlord's responsibility?
Our.
It is. I would also like to move, move forward on, um, if we can, if we can discuss it.
I was looking at ordinances and it's a gray area, but from what I'm reading, the business owns the sidewalk. They're responsible for the sidewalk upkeep. So I think we need to review that and make sure, but I know what you're talking about. It used to be a pile of rubble and now the bricks are completely cleaned up, but the wall. There is a, an ink spot on our, on our facade. So I'll, I'll be happy to check into it, but, um, we can address it again Tuesday night if that means, please.
I want to jump ahead to, uh, removing the structure and get to the city website and Facebook page. I don't think there's, there'll be any argument that, uh, our website is severely outdated and covers only years. A lot of the stuff that's on there hasn't been updated in quite some time. And I think it desperately needs to be updated. Not everyone can make it to the meetings. Not everyone can make it to City Hall throughout the day from, you know, eight to five. A lot of people have to work, um, you know, during the time that City Hall's or anything, and working information. I would like to see us get quotes on a new site. So that we can post our agendas in minutes, events, all of our proposed budgets and proposed ordinances before they're voted on, so the city, uh, citizens can. Fuel, read them, give us input. I'd also like to see us post our video on live with the meetings. We got someone that's recording it. And he's already here recording. I don't understand why we can't just go and put those online, so that people that can't make the meetings can see what we're doing and stand forward.
Can I say as much? This is, this is what we've been talking about, about getting more citizen involvement. If, if we have a proper working website and if it's, if it's something that our citizens can go online and see, see, you know. Well, you know, they're going to be speaking about this at the next agenda, I mean, the, the workshop and or the council meeting. It might be someone that, at that particular time, who wants to come in and say, oh, you know what, I want to be at that meeting. And it's, I know Gary and I have spoken about this, um, about having it more citizen-friendly, citizen involvement. Because our citizens put us here and that's who we need to be working for.
And then likewise, um, I believe we have a Facebook page, but I don't think it's used very often as well and everybody knows social media is used strongly these days. I'd like to see us have a more active role in, uh, social media. I know that, um, we have to put disclaimers on social media, is my understanding, according to a, a policy we have. Letting everyone know, subject to records, you know, we have to be archived, but it's a good break, a good way for, uh, us to reach people, I think, in what is going on with the city. And if nothing else, I think it would be a good way of spending our agendas and minutes, um, other than above getting a little website. And then lastly, on that note, um, we have a sign-out front. I believe we're doing a better job now of, of getting that updated and, uh, thank you for that. I would hope that we can continue to do that. I think it's, uh, don't want to see Merry Christmas, you know, in the middle of September or something like those. Uh, the next thing I'd like to talk about briefly is city finances. I must say that I spoke about city finances back in December and appeared that we had. Some pretty severe, uh, defects in our revenue from the report I received. I've since gotten a new report and the revenues look much better. It's my understanding, there was something with the software, um, where water and, uh, syrup was not posted correctly. That being the case, uh, I do have an updated revenue expenditure statement. It looks much healthier than what the revision had called. But I would also like to go ahead and, uh, start looking at setting up dates for our budget for next year. I would hope that we can get started with it. Starting with that sometime in February, I'd like to ask the department to come in and explain to us each one of their, their line items. So that those of us that are new understand what we're approving in the budget. We have some line items here that, uh, have quite a, a large amount of money budgeted for and I'm not sure what it's for. Some of these line items have large amounts of money budgeted and zero dollars has been spent in whatever halfway through fiscal year. So if we went into the next budget, hopefully we can discuss that and, um, get a, a better idea of why we're budgeting certain amounts of money in certain line items and if we truly need to do that. Additionally, I would like to see, um, a monthly revenue expenditure report. I've talked to the mayor and, um, he's. He's providing us with, uh, that information now, um, and fund balances, so that we, we can tell what our, uh, bank accounts have in it. And lastly, I would, uh, like to review our financial policy at some point in the near future. I think there's some areas on there that need to be addressed that, um, actually might be contradictory to itself. And then, uh, our audit status. Recently, some of us met with, uh, auditors. And as many of you know, we were told that the audit would be completed on December thirty-first, well, that was not the case. After talking with our auditor, we were told that if they were given all the information that they requested the same day we met with them. It would be a minimum of six weeks before the audit was completed. So, mayor has, uh, got staff working to, uh, get that information and they're working hard, uh, to get all the information over, uh, to the auditors. So hopefully we'll have results for the two thousand seventeen audit very soon.
On that note, everyone should have gotten an envelope. We need to all fill that out. And that, from that point when they receive that from each of the council members and the mayor, um, it will, they assure us six weeks from that point. Everything else, I believe Susan has supplied them with at this point. Am I correct?
Not completely, working on it.
Okay, but a large portion you've got, but we have to do our, our part to get that to you. If you don't have it, um, make sure that you check with Susan.
And then, it looks like this questionnaire is an interview.
I just want you to fill it out and put your name at the top.
Okay, so this, we just filled it, we can fill this out tonight? Okay, I'll fill mine out tonight.
And Amanda from, from Audiobirds, if you have questions, you can reach out.
Yeah, I mean, this is all about.
That's mine. I, I didn't say any major hook up with that.
No.
Uh, she also made a suggestion that we consider, um, hiring a, a full-time accountant in the near future to make sure that, uh, audits stay up to date. You know, and just make trouble again in the future.
I do want to say thank you to Susan. She has worked tirelessly in getting every, getting us and the auditors everything that they need. She has been valuable to us. And I want to say thank you, Susan.
Uh, city infrastructure. Recently, I had spoken with Jordan. We talked, um, about our water and sewer lines and. I believe that the city needs to start looking at a plan on problem areas with our water and our sewer. My understanding, there's a line in the ground, it's probably fifty years old, maybe owner. I think we need to, uh, consider investing in replacement of these old lines. It will become such a big problem.
Yeah.
Now, I know we're working to get our, our audit done and hopefully, uh, in the near future. Now, I know we're working to get our audit in and hopefully in the near future we can digress, but we need to at least start a conversation about where we need to start. Under desk tonight, there's three pieces of paper that relates to water line replacement. And actually, I noticed water line replacement and another was well development construction, which I get to hear just above it. Now, I apologize for the smearing of the color of here, but speaking with Jordan, he has heard of the water line. He's a firm contractor for the city when it comes to water. And the suggestion was, unless I'm correct, and Jordan, if I am, please correct me, the suggestion was all of these lines that probably need to be replaced around Broad Street from around Sixth, all the way down to right around First Street. And as you know, this serves the outer community school well. The water line replacement, while it's a whole plate from 2018, it at least gives you kind of a ballpark figure of what you're going to be looking at should those lines be replaced. Additionally, I think we, we have to start talking about our reservoir and water treatment plan. I'm sorry.
Probably should tell them what that dollar figure estimate is so that they know.
Sorry. Everyone knows this is an old quote, I'm not sure when it was solicited. We did not solicit for this quote, but it's from July 2018.